Please bow with me. We're very thankful for today. We're thankful for the college that you have given us and for our leadership and our board and our president. And I'm thankful for all the people that are here today that support Weatherford College and are interested in the Parker County community and the five county service area that we have. Thank you for all the students you've brought to us. Please keep them safe. Please be with the board as they deliberate today. We thank you for all you've done for this place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let's stand and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Number two on the agenda is open forum. How do we stand on that today? No one? All right, thank you ma'am. Number three is the President's Report, Dr. Farmer, number A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and provide employee notices. Recognizations. The Weatherford College Foundation Golf Tournament was held on October 4th. I would like to recognize Vice President Brent Baker and his team for doing a great job of working with the WC Foundation to make the event a huge success. Thank you to our sponsors and everyone who supported the fundraising effort. Congratulations to Dr. Mark White for being named recipient of the Carlos Hartnett Award, the most prestigious honor awarded by the Weatherford College Foundations. As WC's Foundation President, Mike raised a tremendous amount of scholarship money for WC students. And finally, I would like to recognize Katie Edwards for her work as Chair of the Sesquicentennial Committee. Katie and her committee started meeting over a year ago to plan the various events associated with our Sesquicentennial Celebration. She is scheduled to present to you in December, but I wanted to publicly recognize her for all of her extra effort that she and her committee have put into the planning process. Katie, would you please stand so that we can acknowledge you? Congratulations, Katie. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Dr. Kevin Eaton has announced his retirement effective December 31, 2018. Payroll manager Ladonna Raper has resigned from the business office effective October 5, 2018. Vicky Traywick, Associate Dean of Enrollment Management, has retired effective January 31, 2019. And Laura Wolf, an instructor in mathematics, has resigned effective January 7, 2019. We thank these team members for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We'll move to item, agenda item number four, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. Is there a motion that we approve? A, which is approval of minutes for September 13, 2018, board meeting.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Item B on the agenda, financial reports ending September 30, 2018. Doctor Cantrell.
Normally that's only me saying, so normally, but I will be glad to-
Thank you.
-to bring this to you.
Just a brief report. Thank you.
As of September 30, 2018, we had a grand total of $36,120,264 in account balances for the college. Looking at our revenues and expenditures, our operating revenue total is 34.91% of our budget for operating revenues compared to 37.46% last year at this time. But I will say, last year, we had gone over our budget, so we were a little bit ahead on our collections last year of where we are now. But this is right in line with what we had expected for the year. Our non-operating revenues, 22.35% as compared to 23.29. Expenditures, we're looking at total expenditures of 16.20% as compared to 16.14% last year, so we are right in the budget there.
Thank you. We'll move to item number four, number five on the agenda, Consideration Possible Action Authorization to Proceed with Proposal of Veterinarian Technology and Bachelor's Degree in Nursing to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. Mr. Endy.
Board, the Instruction and Student Services Division of Weatherford College would ask that the Weatherford College Board of Trustees grant approval for continued pursuit of proposed new programs of veterinary technology and the bachelor's degree in nursing. Board approval is required for the college to advance each proposal to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and to the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. Approval of these agencies must be requested in the fall semester of 2018 for a potential program implementation of fall 2019. The board's approval at this stage will not oblige the college to implement either program. With us today, representing the animals and the Vet Tech folks, Mr. Dustin Deal from the city of Weatherford and Dr. Amy Trever. She's here with the dog, something back there. And all of those fine folks over there who are very interested in us and our Vet Tech program. I'm going to give you a brief overview of that. The proposed Vet Tech program presents a unique opportunity for the college to partner with the city's animal shelter to provide shared facilities and equipment. The targeted field is considered high demand in our area and demonstrates the potential to provide graduates opportunities to earn a reasonable wage. Implementation would require college commitment of physical plan, financial resources, and two additional employees to serve students in this two-year program. It's an AAS. The program is projected to achieve and maintain revenue neutrality with a cohort of 30 students in each class and a retention rate of 75% year to year. Should licensure standards or decreasing participation require WC to accept fewer students in each of the cohorts, the institution will implement a differential tuition model to offset program expenses and maintain revenue neutrality. If approved, the Vet Tech program could begin dedicating staff as early as January 2019 with the appointment of a director. For an anticipated August 2019 start date, board approval of the program will not oblige the college to start the program or to a start date. We continue with the baccalaureate degree in nursing proposal. Would you like to work on that one first?
Well, why don't we go ahead and have one motion?
Sure. The proposed, we have, in our view, folks back here who are part of our nursing program, our nursing faculty, and some nursing students, and they're here in support of the baccalaureate degree nursing proposal. So, thank you for showing up. The proposed bachelor's degree in nursing would be the first four-year degree offered by Weatherford College, making WC one of only a few community colleges in the state with this unique program. The BSN program will provide online access at a reasonable cost for ADN/RN graduates who want to advance in their profession and gain entree for a wider range of employment opportunities. The new program will include 29 semester credit hours of nursing courses provided in an online environment. The modality will allow us to access a regional potential student population and increase program capacity with minimal impact on the college's physical plan. Implementation costs would be limited to personnel and operating expenses with a projected revenue offsetting those expenses with each student cohort averaging in the mid-20s. If approved, the BSN program could begin assigning personnel immediately in anticipation of an August 2019 start date. Board approval of this program will not oblige the college to start the program or to any start date. I welcome any questions you might have at this time.
I just think they're both great.
Me too.
Think it's a big step in the right direction for the college for the Vet Tech. I've known Dustin for a long time and I know he does a great job at the animal shelter and there's no disputing how well our nursing program does. And so, I'm excited about both.
Me too. And our board approval is just one step, there are more steps to step through, but this is a necessary one to keep us going, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments, Dr. Marlet?
Additional personnel, no?
Each of the programs will acquire additional personnel and the initial startup, as with all workforce education programs, will require initial investment from the college. But what we're looking to do is make them revenue neutral or slightly positive within the first two years of their operations, recovering basically the cost of, you have to have directors in place to design the curriculum and submit the board required documents for the Board of Nurse Examiners. And so, the people who've done all this work, Dr. Lisa Welch has created the proposal with Dr. eBay and Dr. Garofalo regarding the Vet Tech program and Kathy Boswell and Dr. Tola Plasnik and their staff, they've had a committee that have worked this all up. But regarding the personnel, we should be cost neutral pretty quickly.
Are these people hard to find?
Well, are you asking me?
Yeah.
So, our program director, we already have onboard, basically. She currently teaches the Vet Assisting Program, Dr. Garofalo, and she has experience with the Vet Tech program. She ran a program in California. So, she brings all that experience, how to get us accredited through the ABMA, and so she's already an employee, we just changed her position to program director.
I think it's incredible. I applaud the college for taking this initiative.
How many Vet Tech programs are there in Texas at this time? You know?
Kind of five.
I think there are five.
Five.
And that's accredited programs, because there's a few that have programs, but they're not accredited.
Well, I think this is wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Marlet?
This nursing program, is it, how many years?
You have a single year of nursing courses that are required of the students who have come through an associate degree nursing program. You'll notice that if you look at those 29 hours that we're providing online, the typical student will require an additional 31 hours of general education core coursework. We are not describing that as part of the program, first, because it isn't inherent to the nursing program. We already offer those courses and many of our associate degree nursing students, and associate degree nursing students from other colleges will have begun their general education requirements beyond the ADN before they enter into a nursing program. So, that will vary on how long it takes them to complete the program. But again, we offer the vast majority, if not all, of those requirements online, so the student's time to completion could be as short as a single year.
That's fantastic.
What was, you mentioned something made it unique, what was unique about this?
Weatherford College would be one of, as far as we know, three institutions in the metroplex area, the wide metroplex area, that would be offering the baccalaureate degree in nursing as community colleges. Statewide, I think there are less than a dozen people who are discussing this. And part of the reason it's allowable is that it fulfills a documented need, not only in the state of Texas, but nationally for nurses. But you won't find a lot of other community colleges offering baccalaureate degrees anywhere.
I think that's great.
Will the high school student that takes nursing, will any of those courses, they take an high school count towards credit here?
No. Those courses are for us continuing education courses, and as far as I know, they aren't part of our WECOMized curriculum. What they could count toward, and this is an AAS that moves toward an, I'm sorry, ADN that moves toward a BSN, what we could is look at, over time, experiential learning, things that they know that would qualify them for crediting classes, which we're doing across the entire curriculum at Weatherford College.
That's, that's fine, and I just would hope that we coordinate with the high schools, either with this one or with the vet. Maybe some of the courses they take in ag would, you know, I think that would send a good message to the high schools that we want to work with you on workforce jobs.
The, we'll discuss briefly soon, phlebotomy as an opportunity to do dual credit with local high schools. We're also, in the Vet Tech program, which you don't have to approve today, is a model to incorporate dual credit ag students so that they can bring that credit into the Vet Tech program.
Thank you very much.
Is there any special issue that comes up with the co-board on asking them to, do they have to actually authorize this or?
Yes, sir, they do have to authorize it. And as far as any special, I don't see any potential resistance with Vet Tech, but with nursing, there's the chance that some of our competing universities might get a little bit of heartburn and might try to exert some political, we have the capacity to offer this at less than half the price of universities. And so, there's the potential there for some resistance, but I don't anticipate that at this point preventing us from gaining approval.
Good.
All right.
What is the foundation expressed need that stimulated the development of these two programs? In other words, I know you know, but I don't, I don't know a lot of things, but this is what, what makes you think you need these two programs?
There are two different things at play here. So, first, let's discuss nursing. The state of Texas has identified nursing as a high-demand occupation and that there is an ongoing nursing shortage. The allowing of community colleges to invest in creation of baccalaureate degrees was a decision that was cleared by the legislature and by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So, we haven't, as a college, simply identified this as a potential. It's a statewide need and the legislature has driven this discussion. We are simply one of the institutions taking advantage of this opportunity because we have a unique opportunity to serve populations, especially to the west of us, with a program that will emphasize rural health as well as what would normally come out of a nursing program. So, that's what's driving nursing. Vet Tech is a high-demand occupation, but driving this partnership, frankly, is the opportunity to share the facilities and the equipment with the city. The cost of a Vet Tech program offered by a community college by itself is pretty high and we probably couldn't do it without the cooperation of these fine folks. But we've been discussing this for several years and so, we're taking advantage of an opportunity to partner with an entity that can provide us things that probably on our own, we could not afford to provide and offer the program.
And they, the professionals, have expressed that there's a need for this?
Kathy, you want to speak to that? Yes, absolutely. I hear from veterinarians more and more that they want officially licensed veterinary technicians.
Yeah.
Because the, I guess sophistication, especially locally, is growing and growing. And we also have a very large veterinarian shortage in the state of Texas. And that gap can be filled in well by another licensed professional. And so, they're looking at that, too. The other thing is that the Board of Examiners is restricting more tasks to only being able to be done by a licensed veterinary technician, which drives the need for more Texas practice.
So, this is not just anecdotal, this, you have the data that backs it up that you really need these people, these folks.
Yes.
And that there are folks out there that want to do this.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I believe in your board packet. You have detailed information on both of the programs. And Dr. Marlet, if you're looking for the new, the measures that demonstrate the need for the program, I believe they're there for you. I just didn't want to take a whole lot more time with you today.
Thank you.
All right. So, here's the, here's the motion. I'll read it. Maybe someone can sponsor this. That the trustees vote to authorize to proceed with the proposal of veterinarian technology and bachelor's degree in nursing to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and to the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. Will someone make that motion as it's been read?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Thank everyone for coming to show your support. And you're welcome to stay. If you have to move on, we understand that, too, so don't hesitate. That's fine. Thank you very much.
He's so nice, the dog.
Thanks for having us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
They're even taking the dog.
You want me to ask him to leave the dog?
Item number six on the agenda is consideration and possible action facility naming. And I'm so pleased this one's on the agenda. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Trustees. You might recall in our August board meeting, Merlin Coleman and her husband Jim made a presentation. As a matter of fact, the Coleman's are here in the front row today. They spoke in open forum about a request to honor the late I.B. Hand. Since that time, the Coleman's have submitted a letter, which is included in your packet, to Dr. Farmer suggesting that the board consider renaming the business building on the Weatherford campus in honor of Mr. Hand. We discussed this request in cabinet and the group did agree with the Coleman's. Mr. Hand was a distinguished alumnus. He was an attorney and a very esteemed community leader. But probably most important, he was the principal person responsible for the gifting of the Carter property, which is the largest gift in the history of Weatherford College. The cabinet did suggest one change, we suggested to simply name the building the I.B. Hand Building due to the varied offices within that building. We have a policy for this. This follows that policy. And then, I suggest that we work with Mr. Hand's daughter, Carol Hand Ritter, and to have a celebration of this if the board approves it sometime during our Sesquicentennial Year.
Are there any questions or comments on this?
I think it's great. Me too.
Dr. Marlet?
I've said on numerous occasions that I.B. Hand was one of a handful of people, when I moved to Weatherford in '76, that motivated me to become involved and to want to give back. And I've said time and time again, we're so lucky in Weatherford to have had so many generous people want to help, the school districts, the high schools, and the colleges. And I think this is incredibly nice, honored, and I think I.B. would be very proud. He was a very humble man. Didn't ask for, you know, and I can remember sitting here as a board member discussing taking care of the stray animals out there. And we did. We honored the request, but I.B. wanted to help the college and obviously, this is a fitting tribute to him.
Yes. I'd like to add thank you to Merlin and Jim.
Oh, yeah, so much. Well, I guess I need to give you a little bit, a bit of background on, I've known I.B. Hand, gosh, I can't remember how many years, I guess all my life, basically, after I got up into my teen years, he was the next-door neighbor to my, to my in-laws, Dr. and Ms. Merrick, of course. And he was, he and Helen, his wife's name was Helen. And you talk about two really basic, fine people, they were just the salt of the earth. So, and also, of course, I know Carol quite well. I.B. and Helen had two other children that are now deceased, and I wish they were going to be here so that they could see what hopefully will be done here today. But I.B. was born and raised in Parker County and he came from a very humble backgrounds. He graduated from law school down at University of Texas. He was an FBI agent for a while before he began his, his law career. And so, as we move forward with dealing with the Carter property, I think it's just amazing what the value of that property will turn out to be in the future. Because it's strategically located, it's worth so much, it's got a very high value. And I.B. and my understanding caused all of that to happen. And he really did love Weatherford College, probably just about as much as he loved the University of Texas, as my friends Jim and Merlin, they bleed orange. Isn't that right, Jim? Anyway, I'd like to ask if there's a motion that we, that we name this building the I.B. Hand Building. Is there such a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Merlin, thank you so much.
I can't wait to call Carol soon.
Thanks for coming, too. We're going to move to reports. Item number seven, reports, BI Legal Access and Affordability Report. Mr. Penley. Merlin, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Policy BI Legal requires a report outlining the access and affordability of the institution for the previous academic year to be presented to the governing body no later than November 1st. The access and affordability document found within your board packet provides information on the average tuition and fees for 30 semester college hours at Weatherford College by region, lists criteria used to admit students, lists the median family income by region, outlines the criteria for awarding financial aid, and provides a snapshot of enrollment data for students at Weatherford College broken down by region, ethnicity, and gender. The original report within the board packet did have a small typo. The male gender count for 2017-18 is 3,130, not 2,130. This is a 3% increase year to year. The highest increase in identified ethnicity for Weatherford College students is the Hispanic ethnicity, which had a 13% increase year to year. If you have any questions over this document, I'd be happy to answer those questions at this time.
It's good to meet you.
Thank you for the report. I think it's astounding at the, the cost, the cost is so reasonable to go to school here. And I'm also amazed that we have so many more ladies that want to enroll and come here. And I think that's, that's wonderful. Why is that? Does anybody have an idea? Mr. Endy.
That's a national trend. Women coming into education is, higher education is a fantastic thing.
Yes.
It is troubling that fewer and fewer men see higher education as a necessary component in their advancement, particularly as we deal with minority males. It is particularly troubling because higher education is one of a few factors that can lead to social and economic mobility. And so, we'll be talking about in the few moments, but also in the days and weeks and months to come, about how to bring those people back to the table if we can and improve their access to higher education and their involvement in higher education.
Thank you. Dr. Cantrell, Guided Pathways Update.
Very excited to say that we held our third Guided Pathways Workshop last Friday. In attendance were two of our board members, and all the administration there, faculty, staff of the college, we're all in attendance as we take the next step to the, toward the Weatherford College Pathway- We first discussed how far we've really come since last year at this time, and we realized that the transformation of this sort, although we've come a long ways, is a lot of hard work and determination to fully implement the initiative. The guided pathways leadership team is very optimistic that we believe that we had created a climate for change, and that was evident last Friday. Our faculty and staff are excited about the guided pathways efforts that are taking place such as the establishment of meta majors and fields of study for students that will make it easier for them to distinguish their path to graduation. They're very excited about the initiatives that we're taking place in advising, and we're also looking forward to other ways that we can support student success. We want to recognize that student success movement is a grounds-up initiative. The leadership team has only laid the groundwork for the journey that the college leadership, faculty, and staff are embarking upon to transform the institution into a culture of student success. As we have come to learn that advising is one of the key components to this whole initiative, Executive Dean Adam Finley and his team presented ways of supporting along their paths, supporting students along their paths at this workshop. Kay Landrum gave an overview of onboarding procedures as well as a discussion of student orientation. We then broke out into groups by function to examine our strengths and our opportunities to improve the success of students. The functions were admissions and testing, the business office and payment, financial aid, bookstore, housing cafeteria plans, registration, and advising, student ID and parking. Adam Finley then presented a session on looking forward and where we will be in the future with student advising, where we are going to improve student success. It was pointed out to the group as we looked toward the end of the day that we believe we have fully embraced the guided pathways by first showing your support as a Board to the student success initiative in June when you approved the $2.5 million purchase of a key component of student success, the new Alucion colleague ERP system. I'm thrilled to be able to say that we ended the day with the kickoff of the implementation of the new system, which will enable us to become a more data-driven institution which will greatly improve student success as well as allow us to sustain the changes that we are making. The day ended on a great note with the faculty and staff feeling excited about our future. We feel very strongly that with the commitment of the Board, Dr. Farmer, and all of WC, we will be able to make the transformational reform that will be necessary to meet the goals of sixty by thirty TX. Our commitment as a whole will enhance and accelerate student graduation rates as described as an evolution to student success. Thank you for having this opportunity to enlighten you all on the activities last Friday. I know these two ladies over here took part and brought a lot to the table as far as discussion. I want to remind you all that the Guided Pathways Institute, the number five Guided Pathways Institute will be November fourteenth through the sixteenth, and it is entitled Supporting Students on the Path. We will need commitments today if you all can give us that, to make reservations, and it will be at the Anatole Hotel in Dallas. I believe the first day on the fourteenth will start about one o'clock, and then on Friday, the sixteenth, it usually ends about noon. So if you're interested, please let Teresa know, and we'll be glad to take care of all the reservations and activities for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much. Dr. Marlet, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, all right. Anybody else on the Board? Thank you very much. Andrew, you're shown on report seven C, but I think it's Ms. Williams, isn't it, that's going to be?
Yes.
Are you going to introduce her or make some comments first? Okay, thank you.
I've been discussing bringing it to you all over the last year at different times before we've received very much information on it, but GASB number seventy-five has, is here. We've been talking about, we did GASB sixty-eight, I believe, in fifteen, was that right Kathy? Where we had to record all of our pension liabilities for really the state of Texas that they're transferring down to the individual institutions. So at this time, we've been asked to do that with all other post-educational or post-employment benefits for our employees, which is quite a sizable figure. We have worked up, they've sent us information from the state to work up these worksheets on there and to figure our liability, but it is such a large number that I did want Kathy and them to review that, and instead of logging us down when the audit's presented in December, I wanted her to go ahead and speak to this right now.
Thank you very much.
Turn this over to Kathy.
Glad to have you today.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathy Williams, I'm a partner with Snow Garrett Williams. I have Kimberly Worthing with me today, she's an audit manager with our firm, and she actually tested a lot of the numbers, so I wanted to have her along as well, just because it's not an easy concept, you know? I wish there was a way that I could make this very simple and easy for you to understand. You don't have that, it's just up there. I told Kimberly, I tried to find some pretty pictures. There aren't any pretty pictures that go with accounting concepts, so I couldn't find any. In fact, one of them, it was a PowerPoint presentation, and it talked about, you know, all of these governmental entities had to record their pension liability several years ago, and then it was a picture of Jaws, and it said, "But don't get back in the water." Because now you have to record another liability. And sorry, it kind of got a little jumbled on the screen, but as you can see, this is, as Andrew had mentioned, other post-employment benefits, that's what the acronym OPEB stands for, and it has to do with employment benefits other than pensions that state or local governments provide to their retired employees. Specifically for the college, you contribute to the State Retire Me Health Plan, which is administered by the Employees Retirement System of Texas to provide medical benefits to retired employees at the college. So that is what is causing, that is where this liability comes from. Governmental Accounting Standards Board, we often, we have so many acronyms, that's the GASB. They set the standards for governmental financial statements, and they are the ones that developed this GASB seventy-five, which is a statement issued by them, and it is designed, according to them, to improve decision-making and accountability, comparability across government and transparency. It does, the calculation and the methodology that they use to come up with the numbers and the disclosures and everything is very similar to the pension standards. They were issued in two thousand twelve, but they had staggered implementation dates, that's why it was later for the college. And this particular standard, number seventy-five, is effective for periods beginning after June fifteenth of two thousand seventeen, which for the college was the two thousand eighteen fiscal year. What this GASB seventy-five requires entities to do is to recognize what is called a net OPEB liability on the face of the financial statements and present more extensive footnote disclosures. So in the liability section of your balance sheet, right near the pension liability, there is going to be another very large liability for these other post-employment benefits. The impact on Weatherford College based on the calculations that have come from, let's see, that's, can you go to the next page on that? The impact on the college is actually going to be to reduce net position or fund balance by seventeen point one million dollars. It's a big number. And I will tell you, I don't know if it makes you feel any better, the initial calculation was thirty million, and they came back with some changes, and it came down to seventeen point one, which is still a very large number. The way that they come up with this calculation, they, it has to do with the state comptroller's office actually helped develop the calculation with the Employee Retirement System of Texas, and then all of that is based on actuarial assumptions and data that they put into these formulas. So what I'm telling you here is, it's the result of a calculation and accounting entries. It is not, it's not cash out of the college's pocket, you're not going to see it affect your cash balances, it is going to be a long-term liability. There will be a few other accounts that are new and in there, but the biggest impact you will see is that long-term liability and a reduction in your equity or fund balance number. But it does not affect cash. It also does not change anything that the business office will do on a day-to-day basis, on an operational basis. The financial statements that you see each month will not change significantly, it will just look different on your year-end financial statements primarily. And it's just, it's one of those things, just like the pensions were a few years ago, that they, the GASB has said, all governmental entities have to record this differently and they have to show this liability. It's not something that I made up, or that the coordinating board made up, or that the business office made up, because trust me, if they had asked any of us, we probably wouldn't have made it up. But it is, you have to follow those GASB standards for your financial statements to be in accordance with their standards and for the coordinating board. And it does, it will, I will say on a positive note, one of their reasons was to make all of these governmental entities and all of the community college districts to make their financial statements more comparable, to be able to keep that consistency among those entities. So it's a very complicated calculation, I did not want to go into all the numbers, however, Kimberly has spent hours on those numbers, as has Becky DePew. They have looked at these calculations, and we will see them, and I will go over them, not necessarily the calculations, but I will show you in your financial statements when we present the audit to you, I'll show them to you. But I liked Andrew's suggestion to try and explain some of this right now, because I didn't want the entire audit presentation to be caught up in talking about other post-employment benefits. So, and I think that was a great suggestion.
How many retired employees do we have at this time? Do you know?
Was that number in any of those calculations?
I mean, maybe that's a dumb question.
No. Mac, and I will tell you the reason we can't give you that answer.
Right.
Because for years and years, this is a liability of the state right now, and for years, once the insurance was transferred to the state back, way back in the eighties, they told us at that time, do not, you do not touch the retirees, do not keep up with them, do not talk to them. Well, after all the pension problems and all that, because they are in direct communication with the state at all times, it's not us that they call or ask anything about. So it's their liability, but this is in response to failed pension programs, so this, we are a secondary, Kathy, is that right? If something were to happen to the state, it falls to the college. So this is not something that is, hopefully will ever reduce our funds, but the Governmental Accounting Standard just says you will record it.
Well, when you talk about the effect on equity, can you give me an example of what that means?
What that means, I'm just, I'm going to use large numbers right now. What that means is last year in your audited financial statements, the college's fund balance, its net position or equity number was just over twenty-five million dollars. It means it's going to back seventeen, it's going to subtract seventeen million dollars from that number. It does not change your reserves, that's why I say that about cash. It's not, it's not going to change that cash position that the college has. There are going to be other things on the balance sheet that move up and down, but it will not be your cash. It's truly an accounting entry. But it may change the way that you look at your reserves a little bit, it may change the way that you look at equity a little bit, because they're carving part of that equity out and saying that it is going to be a liability on your balance sheet instead of part of your net position or fund balance.
Will there be any effect on our bond rating because our fund balance drops significantly?
I don't believe there will, because all, this is applying to all entities, and the bond rating companies are aware of it. They know that it's there, and if they see equity changes like that, they are going to know the reason for those changes, just like they had to know that when the pension was.
We really have that money, it's just not clear it's over here.
Correct. That is correct.
It will be very strongly footnoted in the audit for everyone to see.
It adds pages and pages to the footnote.
Rating agencies to see, and I was at a meeting in Austin yesterday, the coordinating board spoke to us, you know, no one likes this, but out of the room of fifty colleges, thirty-nine will no longer be in the black on their fund balances, because luckily we will.
Yeah, so the positive part.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Thirty-nine out of the fifty community colleges will no longer be in the black on their fund balance.
Oh.
Because of this.
But we will.
Luckily, we will.
That speaks volumes.
Thank you, Andrew.
Well, no, it's not.
Thank you, everyone.
It's everyone.
I mean, it speaks volumes on the decisions made by previous boards to not.
And I will say this, we, I mean, everybody's allocation was a different percentage, and it depends on how much, say for this, health insurance, how many other benefits that the college provides. And I will say this right now, there were some colleges, Dallas Community College, eleven point one percent, we were at point oh four percent of what our benefits are. So, you know, it depends on, but some of them have really stepped out over the years and done some great things, which I applaud with their colleges, but we're on the lower end of those percentages.
It does appear that for the two thousand seventeen fiscal year, there were eighty-seven retirees that were receiving these types of benefits. The year before that, it was eighty-two retirees.
This figure will be adjusted every year.
Every year.
It'll be an in and an out every year from this point forward.
Well, this is kind of alarming in a sense, because given the nature of the Texas politicians to raid Peter to pay Paul, or raid funds wherever they can find them, it makes us seventeen million dollars more vulnerable, maybe.
Maybe.
If they so decide or do so.
And it's at the national level that's causing us to do this, really.
Right.
It's not state of Texas that declared it will take place.
It takes that entire, that entire pool or entire group in that employee retirement system pool that has to do with post-employment benefits, it takes that entire amount, the calculation does, and then it filters it down based on different percentages to all of the community colleges that participate.
It probably factors in the thirty-nine, and we have to pick up a lot of theirs.
Not necessarily. I don't, I don't know that it does, because there, like I said, a lot of actuarial calculations that go into this, and it also is somewhat dependent on contributions that each of those entities have made over the years. So I don't, I don't know that they will spread that shortfall out to the other entities.
Okay.
I don't think that would be, I have not seen that in the pension calculations in the last couple of years, I don't think that's how they would approach that. I can't guarantee it, but I don't think it is. But what I started to say when Andrew was pointing that out about the thirty-nine, is that right? It does, even though it is very negative, it does, you know, it has that negative impact on Weatherford College, but at least you're remaining at a positive number. And that's, that says a lot about this institution.
Thirty-nine was figured by one of the other chief financially, it was not given to us by the state or anything else, but she had done this on her own, I thought it was very eye-opening, although we knew it, we knew that several of the colleges.
Well, and you could tell, we could tell just from looking at the percentages, we had that feeling, we didn't know the actual numbers, but just looking at the percentages for all of the community college districts, we knew there were going to be some that this would, this would be even more negative for them.
Questions, comments?
Just.
Anyone? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you very much, y'all have a great afternoon.
Kathy, she's, I've been involved in several audit presentations she's done, and she is a prime example of someone who has succeeded tremendously in the business that she's in, and she's carried Wayne and Gary for years.
I don't know about that, but thank you very much.
She's done a lot to raise the reputation of that place.
She's one of those women in leadership.
There you go.
Okay, so we'll move to, thank you for that report, as alarming as it is. Seven D, this will be the demand study update, and not only Mr. Endy, but I guess Mr. Omira will also be presenting, is that correct?
Dr. Omira will be presenting, yes.
All right, proceed ahead.
The college continues to investigate potential markets on several fronts. As our proposals today indicated, we're exploring several occupations identified on the regional targeted and demands list beyond the Vet Tech and BSN programs we approved earlier today. We're writing a jet grant proposal for ex- As our proposals today indicated, we're exploring several occupations identified on the regional targeted and demands list beyond the Vet Tech and BSN programs we approved earlier today. We're writing a jet grant proposal for expansion of phlebotomy to include dual credit and dual credit to college program options. Today, we're submitting a national science and foundation grant to support the creation of an automated industrial maintenance technician program. That's an AAS program that will begin as continuing education. It's fixing robotic machines. The AIMT will incorporate curriculum from existing certificate programs while providing new professional training opportunities for these high-demand fields. It also will allow us to target some of those male minority students who are not coming into higher education. The college is also partnering with Mineral Wells ISD in the authoring of a jet grant to fund a partnership implementing a logistics training program with Mineral Wells ISD. We're also creating a database for workforce education for the high schools that's career and technical education programs, available at our secondary education institutions throughout the service area. Our database will detail where and when these programs are offered, if they may be shared among districts, and what the costs would be to districts that were sharing these dual, these CTE programs. Our goal is to develop the list to include all local secondary education institutions, to identify opportunities for WC to better share in those opportunities, and to serve our region through new dual credit partnerships. Now, Dr. Omira, the dean of Weatherford College Wise County, will speak to the needs assessment he's been conducting at Wise County. Dr. Omira.
Thank you, Vice President Indy, Mr. Chair, trustees, President Farmer. I'm very happy to be here at this point, and thank you for the opportunity to share an overview of this particular effort in obtaining labor market demand information for north-central Texas, and how that data may be another step in engaging our local partners in business, industry, and K-12 in support of Wise County student and community success. A note of thanks to Dr. Arlene Atkins and Mr. Lee Butler for their invaluable assistance in providing accurate and timely data, as well as Ms. Katina Middleton for her review of this particular piece assuring high-quality output. Critical to this particular effort was engaging our community stakeholders to include business and industry partners, elected officials in our K-12 community. Many of these constituents have voiced their thoughts to me personally on potential avenues of educational and training opportunities at the Wise County campus. This report, as such, documents a snapshot of the employment demands for north-central Texas with the focus on the role the Wise County campus may potentially play in meeting those particular demands. The scope of the study is limited in nature. It is intended to provide initial guidance in the evaluation of possible future educational and training opportunities that may help evaluate such offerings on the Wise County campus in response to the needs of our local, regional employers based on relevant data and the Weatherford College strategic plan. The goal of the study is to provide the primary step for a rational decision-making model and to serve as a guide toward efficient use of Wise County resources in response to community and regional educational training opportunities. The findings of this demand study show that regional employer demands with projections through 2024 indicate six major areas of projected employment demands that Wise County campus can contribute toward. Workforce development, hospitality and tourism. There is a projected employment need by the year 2024 for 50,000 people in the north-central Texas region. Transportation, distribution, logistics, to include heavy and tractor-trailer truck drivers. The projected employment is 16,800 people. Architecture and construction, that includes maintenance and repair workers in general, a little over 10,000. Now, in terms of general education, marketing, sales and service, retail, sales personnel, and other mid-level management, the projected employment for 2024 in north-central Texas is over 44,000 people. Agriculture, food, and natural resources, to include first-line supervisors of retail establishment, the projected employment for that is 13,340 people. The projected need for allied health, to include RN and LVN, is a little over 25,000 people. In light of Weatherford College's Guided Pathways Initiative, an increased focus on dual credit relationship within the college's service area, a long-term strategy to address the workforce and general education needs of the Weatherford College Wise County campus should further be reviewed. The college is well-suited to handle navigating the needs of the community through its well-established marketing, promotion, and outreach resources. To meet the future educational and training demands specifically of Wise County constituents, it is recommended by this humble servant that a feasibility study supporting the Wise County campus should best be conducted by a Weatherford College feasibility study group or to hire an independent third, third-party consultant. And that concludes my brief report on this demand study. Mr. Chairman, trustees, President Farmer, should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'm here to answer them, at least direct them to the right person in the absence of having the response.
How much discussion has there been about this feasibility study, Dr. Omira?
Sir, nothing to date. We've discussed the demand study to see what the local employment demands are, and it is the opinion of this humble servant of this institution, that feasibility study would be appropriate to start considering that notion at this point in the game.
But in other words, it hasn't really been discussed? It's just an idea that you, you've had here?
As a result of this particular study, Mr. Chairman, but I have not, maybe Vice President-
Have you had a chance to talk around on it?
President Farmer may know something about a feasibility study that I'm not aware of.
You're, you, you talk faster than I can compute in my little brain up here, so, and that's okay. How many, what's the projected growth in, in, in Wise County by 2024? Say in the next five, six years?
In terms of population?
Yes.
It's been indicated, Mr. Chairman, that population will almost double in the next 20 years.
Wow. And the numbers you were given were like the 44,000 for transportation?
No, sir, 16,000 for transportation.
Okay, but what was the 44, was that for?
44,000, Mr. Chair, I believe that 44,000 is marketing, sales, service, retail, sales personnel, and other mid-level management.
Yeah. Okay, all right. And that will be needed within Wise County to, to service the needs?
The goal of this demand study, sir, surfaced from a regional need.
Okay.
And so we're extrapolating from that regional need to Wise County. So these numbers are rather large, because they reflect the need for north-central Texas. But we believe, according to this demand study, that Wise County, based on the projections of demographic growth, will, will necessarily have to have some form of educational or workforce training on the Wise County campus.
Okay, all right. Very good. Dr. Marlet?
Well, where to begin?
I'll let this Yankee, try to slow down, Dr. Marlet.
Um, no, I don't know. It's a, we talk about this as Wise County, and we should have been, and, but the, but I, I don't, I don't see it that way. Others I don't see, but anyway. This whole college should be basing all its fundamental decisions based on good, solid, researched, ferreted-out information about what the needs are for this region for certain lengths of time. And it's like having a good constitution that you live by or a good foundation of information that you base, because a lot of ti-, because a lot, a lot of decisions, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything negative here at, at all, but a lot of times in, in upper, in, in any educational units, regardless of whether they're lower, in public schools or in colleges, are based on a lot of anecdotal things, things they read in the paper or whatever. Well, there's a great need for this. Well, we ought to do that. Well, we can do that, because we see that this is this, and now we can check it off, and we get our ticket punched, and we go on. And there's no longevity to it. There's no, okay, did we accomplish that? What level did we accomplish that? What level are we projecting we need next year to look at it? Did we accomplish that level of serving that need, that particular need, whether it's general education, or work studies, or, or truck driving, or welding, whatever it is? Did we meet our expected need? Not because we're trying to compete and be the largest college in this area, it's because we want to be the best college in this area. Are we satisfying the needs that are real? That we can, in, with solid information, defend? We need this many folks of the pie that all the colleges serve. We expect to serve this amount of that need in our region, and, and it's based on good, solid information that that need is here. And did we meet it, or did we not meet it? And so on. Maybe this is what you've got, you folks are, wonderful folks are talking about. But I, I'm just, I, I pick up on the business of, of a more comprehensive study that you can, you know, sink your teeth into and defend next year, and defend the year after, and defend the year after. Are we doing that? Are we on the road to doing that? I, I don't know.
So is a comprehensive study different than a feasibility study?
Well, feasibility can be any part of a comprehensive study. If we, comprehensively, meaning we're not just talking about truck driving or welding, or nursing, or we're, we're talking about overall, how well are we serving the needs of a two-year, or maybe three-year, or whatever, college for those students going on to tobacco lariats? Or how well are we serving them? It may have nothing to do with what we normally call vocational classes, even though they turn out to be that in the end. You know?
If I may, Dr. Marlet? There is a distinction between workforce education and academic transfer, and it seems to me your, your interest is in the larger population of academic transfer students, the draw of the college from its service area into its academic programs, and the success of students through the academic programs and beyond into their chosen career paths. That data, we can pull, and we'll look at that. It's IPED's data.
But we will begin this data, and it's the National Student Clearing House.
Right. And we can pull that data and talk to you about how students progress through the process, and talk about goals that we have regarding drawing from specific area populations and what we expect them to do. I may be missing your point, I apologize.
No, 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 that's fine. But I hear the word "national" data, and that kind of alarms me a little bit, because I'm, I'm really talking about regional data.
The National Student Clearing House is a comprehensive database with all the colleges that choose to participate. We can track our individual students to any college they attend after they leave us. We can see their graduation rates, what they choose to major in, things of that nature. In conjunction with that, we also have the capacity, and I have yet to talk to Dr. Johnson at the Wise County, but that is how on my list to do, to start designing the study that will reach into the communities that we serve, all of our service areas, to talk to businesses and employers and find out what their needs are, and then determine how strategically are we aligned with what we're doing here with the needs of the community in that, in that particular context. That particular study is going to take a lot of time, and it's going to take some resources. We'll be combining survey research with demographic interviews in order to assemble that data. So it's going to take some boots on the ground in different parts of our service area.
Has that structure been written?
That structure has not been written. It was initially started by Dr. Johnson in Wise County, specifically to Wise County. The next step is for her and I to get together and expand that structure and write the protocol.
When do you, when do you anticipate something like that might be done?
My plate's getting rather large, but this is a priority, so I'll make overtures to Dr. Johnson within the week and see what we can get done by December.
Thank you. I'm just sensing and hearing and from Dr. Omira and others, they've just, we just really need a sound basis for making really important decisions concerning limited resources that we have. Because we want to naturally do everything we can for those people we serve. This college can do it. I've seen, I've seen a lot of commendable things going on here that it's, uh, it's like anything else, I see we're sometimes not reaching deep enough into all the wonderful resources that we have to do that.
May I suggest-
That's one of these things.
Pardon me, Dr. Marlet, but may I suggest that you communicate with us through Dr. Farmer regarding these resources and the targets that you have? Because I feel like we've been disappointing you and aiming at the targets you're not looking for, and you as a board may not be looking for, and I think that's, that's going to just frustrate you more. So if you can help us to identify what your specific targets are, we'll be glad to try to approach them. But right now, I feel a bit like we're, we're not hitting the targets you're aiming at, and I don't think that's, that's good for us.
I think you are, I think you are. I'm just wanting a comprehensive examination of the need.
And in addition to talking to employers, we also have access through our dual credit programs to the high schools to find out what the students are interested in, so we can correlate that.
Well, this is information and discussion, obviously, and the topic here is potential demand opportunities. So I guess my question, Dr. Farmer, is, there's, what's next? Sounds like we got a rudder in the water, where are we headed?
We do, and I think that we do have a start, looking at some of the IPED's data, and although it's national, not regional, the U.S. Department of Labor invests millions of dollars in a comprehensive study, the Occupational Outlook Handbook, which has regional information on future demands for a variety of professions. It is extremely comprehensive in nature, and there's data that we can glean from that. But as Mr. Butler said, it's also going to take boots on the ground and getting out and visiting with those employers in Wise County, and all of our service area. One of the areas, well, actually two of the areas we're looking at right now specific to Wise County is an expansion of our truck driving program. We know that that's one area of need that's been documented from multiple sources, and so we're looking at how to make that happen. And there's also a potential partnership with a business there that, that we're looking at, and we're going to evaluate the demand and what resources we have that might fit that particular demand. And as Dr. Marlet said, when, when you have very scarce resources, we need to use them extremely judiciously.
Sure. And I, Dr. Omira, I want to tell you that I appreciate you coming today and having, having your presentation. I look forward to more of that. We certainly think that Wise County is an extremely part, important part of our operation here, and I really enjoy the, the progress we're making on that, and I appreciate you coming today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Second devotion.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Trustees, thank you so much for your time. President Farmer, thank you so much. Anything else I can do for you before I leave?
No.
All the best to you, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic? If not, we'll move to the next item. Anything else? Okay, number eight on the agenda is future agenda items or meetings. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Agenda item 8A, next month, we will be bringing to you the Equities and Athletics Report, so you can be expecting that on the November agenda. As Dr. Cantrell mentioned earlier, that I will reiterate here, on item B, we have the Guided Pathways Conference, November 14th through the 16th, at the Hilton Anatole in Dallas. We do need to have some confirmation on who's going to be attending that particular meeting. Dr. Cantrell, there she is, I wanted to publicly recognize her for her leadership with the Guided Pathways Initiative, and praise her for doing such a, a good job moving that critically important agenda forward. So thank, thank you to her. Agenda item 8C, next month, in November, we will be bringing you the strategic plan update as well. So please be looking forward to those events.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. So we're now to Mr. Baker on agenda item number nine, announcements.
Yes, sir. Some upcoming events you'd like to know about. If you want to see some students who are very excited about learning, our upcoming STEM Mania event will be a wonderful time for you to see that. STEM Mania event will be a wonderful time for you to see that. We actually have two of them. October twenty-fifth is at our Wise County campus, October twenty-sixth is here at the Weatherford campus, and students from area elementary schools are treated to a great day of learning about science and technology and engineering and math, so if you can come out, we'd love to, love to have you. Also, on October the twenty-sixth, that evening, we'll have a wonderful concert called Texana Duo. This is a classical guitar and flute concert featuring our own Will Douglas. That is at seven-thirty in the Alkeck, of course. Safe Halloween, great event by our police department, our campus police, Paul Stone and those folks do a tremendous job. I believe it, a little under seven thousand kids were here last year, and we appreciate their hard work on that. Of course, October thirty-first, Jazz Band Concert, November the second, at the Alkeck. We have our home opener for our basketball games on November the third, that's a Saturday, it'll be at two o'clock and four o'clock. Choir Concert on the sixth, and then our Veterans Day commemoration will actually be on November the eighth, in order to have more student involvement that day, rather than the eleventh, which I believe falls on the weekend, at the Kramer Veterans Flag Plaza, that'll be at ten forty-five in the morning.
Where is that plaza?
Right outside the academic building, here at the Weatherford.
Right in the middle of that, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'd like to ask you to wear your fatigue.
Yeah.
Okay, number ten on the agenda is closed session, and so we're about to close the open session and have a brief amount of time, stretch our legs. The closed session will, item A, consult with a college attorney in accordance with Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-one, B, deliberate real property in accordance with Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-two, C, deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee in accordance with Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-four. And we are now adjourned in the open session. We're going to close session in just a couple of minutes. Thank you. Public meeting back to order, and we're going to go back to agenda item number four B, and I'm going to ask if there's a motion that we approve the financial reports ending September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. All right, we're going to go now to eleven, and we have actually two motions there that are related to property, real property, and the first motion deals with Reagan County mineral interests. I'm not going any, any discussion on this right now, if we need that later, we can do it in another meeting, but I just want to ask for the motion. What I'm asking for is a motion that authorizes general counsel to list for sale, sale in accordance with current law and regulations, certain mineral interests, a certain mineral interest located in Reagan County, Texas, currently owned by Weatherford College using the web-based listing service of the U.S. Mineral Exchange to list that property, which is sixty-one point four mineral acres, listed with a reserve value of eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which will be set in connection with the bidding for the purchase of those mineral interests, to authorize general counsel to do that. Is there such a motion?
I'll second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Now then, the, the second motion that I'm going to formulate and ask for someone to make is, it concerns the sale tower lease that we have at twenty-seven hundred South Main Street here in Weatherford, Texas, Parker County. What I'm, I'm asking for is a motion that would, will authorize general counsel to facilitate the execution of an agreement to extend the current lease on that sale tower, which is between Weatherford College and American Tower County, extend that lease for an additional twenty-five years, beginning in December of two thousand twenty-two, for the consideration of certain annual lease payments plus a one-time bonus payment of forty thousand dollars. Does everybody understand what the proposed motion would be? Is there such a motion here?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes, and the last item on the agenda is adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.